Welcome to The Definitive Rap, where we report the truth about American exceptionalism. We love our flag, we love our country, and we believe in America. The Definitive Rap, where we respect people of faith, the men and women in blue, and our support for Israel. And now your hosts, Bela Seabro, she's the nice one, and Alan Skorsky, uh, he's not so nice. But together they are, The Definitive Rap.
I'm Alan Skorsky with my co-host Bela Seabro, and welcome to The Definitive Rap Podcast. As always, we want to thank VinNews.com for hosting our shows. During the last several years, FBI data has shown a massive spike of antisemitic attacks against Jews and Jewish institutions, and that Jews have been the most targeted group in America. We are no longer just victimized by Holocaust-denying neo-Nazis, but now are targeted by the far-left radical Islamists and the Free Palestine PLO movement, who have spent years trying to delegitimize Israel in the media, on college campuses, academia, and now the halls of Congress. Last month in Texas, Gina Petty, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction for the Carroll Independent School District, said, "We are in the middle of a political mess. Make sure if you have a book on the Holocaust that you have one that is opposing or other perspectives." In 2019, Florida Principal William Latson said that he had to be politically neutral about the Holocaust because not all our parents have the same beliefs. He was suspended and now has been reinstated. In 2018, Trayon White Sr., a Washington DC Councilman who is now running for mayor, suggested on Facebook that rich Jews control the weather. He later visited the US Holocaust Memorial Museum and left way halfway through the 90-minute tour according to media reports. Today's very special guest, whom Bela will introduce shortly, is Rabbi Abraham Cooper from the Simon Wiesenthal Center to discuss these very troubling events, and if we in the Jewish community and other men and women of goodwill are going to wake up and realize that the threats against us are coming from more corners of society than we want to admit. Bela?
Thank you, Alan. As Holocaust survivor and Nazi hunter Simon Wiesenthal said, "The history of man is the history of crime." And George Orwell, the English journalist, has coined the quote, "However much you deny the truth, the truth goes on existing." We have seen throughout history that those who deny the truth do not change the facts of what has happened. What happened has happened, and it becomes the reality, and it will not go away. One major case in point and a topic today on our show is the denial of the Holocaust. Deniers of the Holocaust, the systemic murder of more than 6 million Jews completely deny that such a genocide took place, or they minimize its atrocity by saying that the millions of lives were inadvertent circumstances of war. Yes, this is what's going on around the world. And what makes it worse in the United States is we have what is called the First Amendment, freedom of speech. Interestingly, there are countries that have laws making it a crime to deny the Holocaust. But the United States Constitution, First Amendment, is all about freedom of expression. Say whatever you want, teach whatever you want. And that's just the way it is. And this has become a cultural phenomenon in the United States in the late 1970s, and it picked up major speed in the early 1990s when student Holocaust deniers published ads denying the Holocaust in college newspapers. Colleges such as the University of Michigan, Ohio State University, and Brandeis University. They defended their actions claiming it was their right to do so. Northwestern University allowed electrical engineering professor Arthur Butts to continue teaching even though he denied the Holocaust. These are just short examples of what is going on. So why are we surprised about Gina Petty in Texas? Or the Florida Principal William Latson saying that not all parents have the same belief about the Holocaust? Or the Trayon White Sr. run, or the mayor, the new mayor that's running? Well, he's not new, but he's running. Trayon White Sr. running for mayor in Washington DC, claiming that Jews control the weather and showing no interest in the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum? Why are we surprised? Holocaust denial has become part of the culture. Thank God that we have the Simon Wiesenthal Center. And we will hear from Rabbi Abraham Cooper, who's Associate Dean and Director of Global Social Action for the Simon Wiesenthal Center, a leading Jewish human rights organization with more than 400,000 family members. Together with Rabbi Hyer, Rabbi Cooper regularly meets with world leaders, including Pope Francis, presidents, and foreign ministers to defend the rights of the Jewish people, combat terrorism, and promote multi-faith relations worldwide. Rabbi Cooper is an acknowledged expert on online hate and terrorism. His op-eds appear in major US and Israeli outlets, in Asia, and in the Arab news, and Al-Arabia. Newsweek, Daily Beast lists Rabbi Cooper and Rabbi Hyer as number eight among the 50 most influential rabbis in the United States. Rabbi Cooper, it gives me tremendous honor and joy to welcome you to our show.
Thank you very much, and that was quite an introduction. My mother, she should live and be well in Brooklyn, New York, would really be moved by it. She should, since she wrote it.
Rabbi Cooper, for those who don't know what the Simon Wiesenthal Center is all about and what you do with regard to Holocaust research and remembrance, hunting Nazi war criminals, combating antisemitism, tolerance education, defending Israel, its own museum tolerance, this is your opportunity to educate our listeners. Please tell us about its inception and what brought about the creation of the Simon Wiesenthal Center.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity, and it's a pleasure to be on the program and to communicate to your audience. Our institution is named, at this point, in memory and originally in honor of a great Jew and a great humanitarian, a great hero of the 20th century, Simon Wiesenthal. A blessed memory. Mr. Wiesenthal was among the millions of Jews in Europe who caught up in the Shoah, in the Nazi Holocaust. By the time that US soldiers freed him from Mahausen concentration camp in Austria in May 1945, he weighed about 90 pounds. Another week, he would have been dead, would have starved to death. He wasn't even strong enough to stand up and hug the American soldiers who had just saved him. And he would soon find out that, together with his wife, who was hidden during the war by righteous Christians, they lost 89 members of their family. So first, Mr. Wiesenthal was a victim of the Nazis. But unlike almost everyone else, you might say, he never left the Holocaust. He became the great Nazi hunter, a person whose commitment was to rehabilitate the very concept of justice in the world that the Nazis had almost succeeded in obliterating. And succeeded in bringing, helping to bring 1,100 Nazi war criminals before the bar of justice after World War II. During the time of the Cold War, I'm old enough to remember the Cold War. Many young people have no idea what it was. But from 1945 on, the former allies, the US, Russia, the US, who got together to finally defeat Hitler, sort of were vying for the power in the world. And during that whole era, former Nazis became potential spies, or potential scientists. Nobody was interested in justice for the victims of the Holocaust. Two out of every three Jews in Europe had been murdered by the Nazi Third Reich and their collaborators in all the European countries they touched. And he was one of a handful of people who said, "I'm not going to let this go." And of course, his most famous cases that he was involved with over the years, which eventually, thank God, the Israelis were able to capture Eichmann, the architect of the Final Solution, put him on trial, and I think the only person ever executed under Israeli law. So Mr. Wiesenthal set up shop in Vienna, in Austria, which is really the core of where the whole Nazi ideology sprouted up. And he really faced a potential of violence or worse every day. Everyone knew who he was. And there were still plenty of former SS, some of them in government, former Nazis, but he drew the line. He fought the fights in various trials. And he did so without any formal training. He was an architect before World War II. And he became a symbol to the Jewish people, and not only, of someone who stood up for justice and would fight against genocide. That's the person that Rabbi Marvin Hyer went to see back in 1977 and said, "I came here to Vienna to take your most precious and valued possession, your good name." And Mr. Wiesenthal basically said, "If you're going to build a place where people will say Kaddish twice a year, beautiful idea. You tell me about the museum? Terrific. I'll give you a letter. If you want my name, I'm an activist. So I know you're going to help me until the end when it comes to Nazi war criminals." And as we speak, probably the last trial of a Nazi associated with the Shoah, a 96-year-old, a 97-year-old former secretary in the Sturhuf concentration camp. Probably the last trial ever. It's taking place because of the commitment of one man. And from that, we, Rabbi Hyer, myself, and our fantastic team, been able to forge a teaching institution, but not a traditional one. That means we have a museum in Los Angeles, the Museum of Tolerance, seven and a half million visitors. We're building an even larger museum in Jerusalem. Our Mariah Films Division has won two Academy Awards. We have traveling exhibitions around the world. I travel a great deal. And one of the things that he said throughout was, "The Jewish people can't do this alone. We need friends, we need allies, we need engagement." And that's also an important part, I think, of our discussion today. You've identified many of the problems that we deal with day in and day out. And hopefully, we'll spend a little bit of time about some strategies that we need to employ and some strategies that have been employed that are showing, I think, some positive signs in a very difficult setting. Insofar as Holocaust denial, we also have to understand that this is not just a matter, initially, of neo-Nazis or of old Nazis who said the only thing that went wrong was the wrong side won, and they were very proud of what happened. So you have actually two types of Holocaust deniers, primarily. One is someone like the Ayatollah Khomeini, the head of Iran, a government which has the full power of a state behind the push for the denial of the Shoah. So he's in the camp that I would say is, "Deny the Holocaust to place and do everything you can to finish the job." Now, that may sound completely bizarre to us because they're polar opposites. But that's exactly, you have a whole arena in which the Shoah is minimized or denied. Along the way, you say, by the way, the real Nazis are today's Israelis. And whatever it is that happened to the Jews in the 20th century, now the Jews are doing it to the Palestinians in the 21st century. So that might sound a little bit, you know, maybe someone needing psychiatric help, and maybe they do. But when you're the head of a state and others that when you have, you know, access to communication, that's a very, very sort of powerful drug. You mentioned before Butts, the associate professor from Northwestern. And he was on CNN, I believe, a quarter of a century ago. I always remembered this particular interview. And they gave him an opportunity to spout his denial of the Shoah. The host of the program got so exasperated because they were actually showing footage of the Holocaust over his voice. And when they came back, and he said, "Well, we just showed you the evidence. How could you deny that Auschwitz that took place?" And I think probably he said his most honest comment ever. "I don't believe that Auschwitz took place because I'm more comfortable not believing that it took place." So when we talk about the Shoah as Jews, we of course are mourning our families. And as Mr. Wiesenthal and the late, great wordsmith and Nobel Prize winner Eli Wiesel, they were the people, among the very few survivors at that point in history, who did speak out and tried to inspire Jews and non-Jews to learn the lessons of what had transpired during the Second World War. Because we all know what begins with the Jews never ends with the Jews. So for many decades, these individuals were lonely voices. Simon Wiesenthal almost had to close his office in Vienna twice for lack of any funding. Eli Wiesel, for a long time, couldn't even write about what took place. We're many decades later. We have Holocaust museums, memorials, films, et cetera, et cetera. So we're now further down the road, but we are confronted with the reality that Holocaust denial, deflection of what took place, the co-opting of Holocaust symbols in important social debates, for example, over the vaccines, et cetera, et cetera. It has become a part. Now, you mentioned specifically two cases that actually came back to public, the public within a few days of each other. Number one was the reinstatement of the principal in Palm Beach, Florida. And number two was the statement of an educator to teachers saying, you know, "Remember now, if you're going to be, when you teach about the Holocaust, if it's been mandated, then make sure that you have access to other opinions." I think in the case of the principal, this man should not be anywhere near a classroom or drafting of curriculum. And yet, he was reinstated four to three. I don't know all the details, maybe it was more about union politics. I'm not aware. All I know is that the kids in that school are now under the supervision of a person who essentially is saying, "It's okay to have your own set of facts." I'm not the first person to say it. But here we are on this wonderful podcast. Everything about America is being able to have your own opinion. But once upon a time, you were allowed your own opinion, but you weren't allowed your own set of facts. And when you take a look at what happened in Texas, I think in some ways, it's more about what's happening in a broader sense here in American society, having maybe not that much to do with the Shoah or even Jews. But it's all about how you feel. And where that, you know, where I would take that like is to share with you a question that I asked the top three police of the New York Police Department back in 2019, actually, early 2020, just before COVID. Many of the people listening and watching won't remember, but we do, that even before COVID, 2019, the Jews were the number-one targets of violent hate crimes in our country. I know that 2019 seems like another century or another planet. But when I asked these three top officials, each of whom were for sure easily in their 60s, they said simultaneously, "Social media." What has changed for them as police was the advent of social media, meaning the opportunity for bigots and racists and antisemites and Holocaust deniers and conspiracy buffs to have an unprecedented access to the most powerful marketing and communications tool on, in the world, still evolving, growing stronger each day, giving the opportunity for these individuals and groups to be able to communicate and target their audiences and victims 24/7. That is the world we live in today. And what's really lacking is any real filter. One could argue, and I've been involved for, my first meeting at Facebook was when they had one building. Now they own four zip codes. You can argue that, "Well, wait a second. It should be totally laissez-faire, freedom of speech. Everything should be able to go on social media, et cetera, et cetera." Of course, we know that's complete nonsense. We have issues like pedophilia, like telling people to send you a check or credit card and you end up ripping them off. There are all sorts of rules and regulations. And we have been interacting with the social media giants, literally, for a quarter of a century. I think one of the great tragedies of American life, and it's not a political statement because we don't endorse political candidates, is what happened that over the years, even as we speak, we continued to meet with upper-level folks from each of these companies, including Facebook. And what we've been basically told was, "Well, we can't really ever eliminate everything because that's not just possible." Now, what did emerge from last year's wild presidential election was that in effect, I think that the Silicon Valley was lying to itself and landed up lying to the world. Meaning when they did get together, they did decide to put their thumb on the scale. They impacted profoundly, not only on the outcome of the national election, but even on what it is that we could read or not read. And the decision to take all of those tools and go political rather than apply them to what we used to call the lunatic fringe, people who are obviously bigots who hate the gays. They hate the Jews, blacks, whatever, because it's a full menu out there. It's not just the Jews. They headed off in the wrong direction. And as a result, if you, you know, read the Wall Street Journal every few days, there's another massive article that shows that at Facebook, and it's probably true with the others. People tried to do their job, whether it's protecting kids or analyzing the data. They sent it upstairs, and in the end, it was basically, "How do we generate more numbers, more revenue, and turning a deaf ear?" So in putting into context, the few minutes that we have, social media is front and center to all of these discussions. And it's, and of course, we're not knocking the technology, otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. You know, and I've got grandchildren in Jerusalem and in Denver, and I live in LA, and et cetera, et cetera. Our world has changed in many ways for the best. But anyone who thinks that the technology in of itself is a total blessing is just not dealing in reality.
Rabbi Cooper, I had a question. There is a saying from on our side that it didn't start with the gas chambers, it started with words. And I have another saying. It didn't start with the gas chambers. It started with the delegitimizing and dehumanizing of the Jews. That's more specific than saying it started with words. And then I allude to the Free Palestine movement. There is a reason why they tag Israel as apartheid, genocide, and ethnic cleansing. Because those words are trigger words. Now apartheid is already sticking because I see it everywhere, Israeli apartheid. But it's bad enough it's coming from them. But it comes from our side also. You have someone like Peter Beinart, who in his book, The Crisis of Zionism, why am I promoting his book? Anyhow, he wrote in his book that "We spent too much money on Holocaust museums, not enough time, not enough money on Jewish day schools, and we haven't learned the lessons of the Holocaust." Last year, we interviewed Nat Lewin, who had written a scathing letter to Deborah Lipstadt of all people who said something to the effect of rejecting the outcome of an election is akin to Holocaust denial. So I mean, this is something that goes way beyond what we're used to confronting. So I don't know if you have any comments about that, if your organization has addressed it or not.
That's a lot of, right, there's a lot of territory there, I think. I remember a Jerusalem Post cartoon, probably Dry Bones, that had two sections to it. One was Jews to Palestine, and underneath it said, "Germany 1932 protesters. Get out and go back." And on the same location, in 2010, Jews out of Palestine. So we know one thing about antisemitism. It continues to morph, metastasize. But actually, what we're dealing with today is that, especially because of social media, but not only, we now have hatred coming from groups and ideologies that are polar opposites, that can't agree on anything except one thing, it's useful, you know, to blame the Jews. I would say that one of the realities, especially during COVID, that we've seen in recent months, it's very interesting that the results of the absorption of these big lies and the promotion of them in academia and in social media, we see it also playing out in our schools across the country. And I've been in touch with many progressive Jewish parents who, for the first time in their lives, have experienced antisemitism, have had their kids come home from public school and say they were bullied and called all these terrible words, you know, et cetera, et cetera, from kids who probably didn't even know exactly what they were saying. So I think one of the great truths, maybe tragic truths about Jewish history is that to our enemies, it doesn't make a difference whether you're wearing a yarmulke, Star of David around your neck, or changed your name, you know, and don't even publicly show your Jewishness. Eventually, the bigots, the racists, the antisemites are going to get around to you. And people, younger people, you know, now younger people beginning to put families together, are beginning to respond. I'll tell you in a moment about what just happened in San Diego. But one of my heroes and great friends, Nat Taucharansky, made a phenomenal statement that I, which I kind of refer to almost every day. He said, "Look, Jewish leaders, it's not our job to tell people how to think or how to vote, or whether to be conservative or progressive. That's up to every individual, do what they want. But here's something we can demand. And that is when you have someone in your movement who expresses antisemitism, you have an obligation to speak up first. It's easy to hit the other guy. But if you really want to be effective as a leader and you want to be true to yourself, I think that's a very important baseline." Now, recently, the San Diego Teachers Union voted, extraordinarily radical, anti-Israel, and many of us would say antisemitic, resolution. The same resolution that was voted down here in Los Angeles was voted, was voted in favor in the San Diego Teachers Union. Just a few days ago, a group of Jewish moms, I guess, in San Diego, smart people, maybe a couple of fathers thrown in there, but they were the engine. They demanded time and were given a slot at the school board meeting for San Diego. They came in with a brilliant resolution. They got the backing of, because they asked, the Wiesenthal Center, of ADL, of the local rabbis. And they made their case before the school board, essentially saying the exact opposite of slapping down this idea that ethnic studies includes the promotion of antisemitism. Explicit language, it was voted through unanimously by the school board. That's the kind of action, activity, and leadership we're going to need. I would just say, I've been at, I'm here at the 44th year at the Wiesenthal Center. But I think we live now in an era that in order for us to be able to move forward, it's got to be all hands on- that in order for us to be able to move forward, it's got to be all hands on deck. In some ways, it's a lot easier these days because we see that the gatekeep, some of the gatekeepers, like the Sarsors and the Squad, et cetera, and other, they're basically telling American Jews, and you have it on campus also, if you want to belong, if you want to be accepted, you have to park your own values at the door. Well, we all know that that's a prescription for the end of our community here in America. And, and God forbid, much worse. One other point, we'll come back to something that Simon Wiesenthal said, just to give you an idea of how old I am. In 1980, I had the honor of going around the Midwest with him. He spoke at a number of synagogues and campuses. He was asked, could it happen again? It's a horrible question, but a legitimate one. And he said the following, if you have hate, organized hate, plus a crisis, plus technology, anything can happen. He continued that when he talked about technology, he was thinking about the Nazi propaganda in the 1930s. And he said, if you would have had the kind of hate and organized hate in technology back in the time of the Spanish Inquisition, no Jew would have survived in Spain. No Catholic would have survived in England. No Protestant would have survived in France. So his bottom line answer was, yes, it could happen. And that was decades before anyone even conceived of the internet. So I'm not saying we're on the eve of anything. We live in the, in the world's greatest country. Our freedoms are precious, but if you come to the Museum of Tolerance, there's another quote from Simon Wiesenthal, who said, freedom is not a gift from heaven. It has to be earned every day. It has to be fought for every day.
Rabbi Cooper, denialism took a turn for the worse when David Irving brought a libel suit against Deborah Lipstadt in 2000. It was on behalf of the Holocaust denial movement. And just recently, rapper Jay Electronica referred to you as a lawyer and devil. My question is, has the Simon Wiesenthal Center had pushback? Meaning, have there been legal complaints launched against the organization?
Well, first, let me just say that I had the honor to attend one day of that lawsuit in the courtroom in London. At the time, I just kept mumbling to myself, there was a reason for the Boston Tea Party. As an American, I was so outraged, I wanted to choke the guy. But actually, the judge did the right thing. He let Irving say everything he wanted to for the record. And in England, when you sue for libel, it's much easier to win than in the United States. The onus is really on the author, not the other way around. In the, in the end, it was British legal system and a British judge who buried Irving, who called him a racist, et cetera, et cetera. Honestly, you know, I, I've been sort of targeted by some of the rap artists going back to the 90s. And, you know, no, I don't consider legal action when, when someone lands up insulting us. As you probably know, I've had a lot to do with a guy named Nick Cannon, who, you know, last year had one of the old rappers on. And one of our staff members came in and said, no, you have to watch this podcast. This is the midst of some of the horrendous statements by basketball players and others. And Kareem Abdul-Jabbar was the one African American who pushed back within his community in a very powerful way against antisemitism. But when I watched this program from Nick Cannon, it, he had a guy on there and who was just basically channeling Farrakhan's hatred from the 1980s right into the mainstream of the African American community. So I just sent out a tweet saying that if you want to know, you know, everything about hate and antisemitism, watch this program. Long story short, we eventually met after he publicly apologized to the, to the American Jewish community. What I found with someone like Nick Cannon, who's an extremely adroit, I think, business person, he's very, very successful in his artistic arena. What he lacked was any filter. I think it's one of the biggest problems right across the board in the world we live in today. As you said in your opening, you can say anything, you can do anything in the name of freedom. But the whole idea of seeking truth, there's no librarian online. There's no fact checker online. So whoever is loudest and most controversial or, you know, group think, all the rest of those things. This is a huge challenge for us collectively. Go, you know, and you were, you also alluded to the fact that in other democracies, including Germany, Austria, UK, there are laws against Holocaust denial. But honestly, we're never going to legislate hate or antisemitism out of existence. And it doesn't mean that there aren't times when you wield the legal, you know, the, the, the legal cudgel. And Nat Lewin is, is a national treasure of the Jewish people and of the American people. A brilliant lawyer who's Orthodox Jew, has been before the Supreme Court numerous times. Yeah, we, we have to engage, you know, on all, on all fronts. But the truth is, in addition to fighting back on the negative, our best weapon are our Jewish values. And pushing that out and explaining to people. I remember in Japan, when we caught a company that was a major company about to publish the Protocols of Zion. We caught them, they apologized, they brought me over, I gave the speech. And the executive vice president of the company said the following, and I want, if you don't remember anything else from our conversation, remember what he said the following. Rabbi, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate the Wiesenthal Center, what you do. And thank you, this is a quote, for explaining to us that the Jewish people don't go to synagogue on the Sabbath to plot the economic downfall of Japan. That's a quote. And he went on to summarize the rest of my speech. I said, well, you know, thank you very much. You summarized my one hour presentation beautifully in two and a half minutes. What's your question? And he said, Rabbi, please tell, we have 75 executives here. What do Jews do in synagogue on the Sabbath? And when I heard that comment from this business leader, it really changed my job description. Because here's the point about you go to the, to the courts and do that. It's really not so much, it's not about me or about, it's really if you have the, you have the mic, you have the attention, or you want to get the attention, or you want to build the coalition. It can never just be on the negative. Okay, the more I travel the world, I've been to Japan close to 40 times, India, Azerbaijan, Indonesia, Nigeria, et cetera. When you go out much antisemitism, but curiosity. Who are you? Who are you people? Why didn't Jews in Toronto care about what happens to Jews in Tel Aviv? Could you explain to us, like, how have you managed to stay around for 3,500 years and 2,000 of those years, you had no connection to your own homeland? That's really the biggest challenge of all. And that extends to the suburbs of LA, to the Philadelphia area, is that we're in a new century now. And we have to do it smart, but we better do it. Who are the local clergy of other faiths? What are they preaching? Did anybody ever knock on the door to speak to them? You know, we can assume that our neighbors are going to have any sympathy, empathy or support for our, for our concerns unless we communicate with them. And that's something, that's an indictment, I must say, of Jews across the political and religious spectrum. Is always assuming someone else will do it. Oh, there's a problem with an elected official, AIPAC will deal with that. But wait a second, it's the city council or we, we have to engage. You know, the, the head of the Black Panthers in the 1960s, and people all know who they were, they can look it up afterwards on Google, said an amazing thing, I was a teenager back then when I heard him say it. He said, he, he learned, this is what he learned from the Holocaust. He learned from the Holocaust that it was a sin to be powerless. So unfortunately, in his mind, that meant you picked up a rifle. We live in a democracy. And so the way to be powerless and to become invisible is to do nothing, is to assume the rabbi will do it, the state senator will do it, this guy back out. Those days are over. And just as we can underestimate the antisemitism out there, we shouldn't overestimate it. This is still the greatest country in the world, but if you don't engage, we all know you, even in your introduction, lineup, you've got service up from here to there. But I'm still fundamentally very optimistic, especially because in my lifetime, I went from being someone who's had to avoid the KGB for a month in the Soviet Union to flying from Moscow to Israel to be at the Kotel in, in the morning. I was someone who now goes regularly to the Gulf States and witnessed the signing of peace treaties between Arabs and Jews. So we shouldn't paint a picture that's only doom and gloom. It's, by the way, horrible for our kids. That's not how we transmit our values. But also, it means that I've heard it from some very good people. From one Rabbi, the late Rabbi Dr. Norman Lamb, who said that he was convinced that 95% of leadership is just showing up. It's time for the American Jewish community, the communities to show up. Do we have differences? Yeah, any synagogue or temple you go to, we know all the Jewish jokes. But we also know one thing, to our enemies, they don't care what our affiliation is. We're fair game and we need to push back smart and hard.
Right, Rabbi Cooper, do you have time to stay with us like for another 15 or 20 minutes?
How about if we do, for me, to the top of the hour, it's about 12 minutes or so. That's about it.
Okay, we'll keep going then, okay. One of the things that I read about Trayon White was that they took him to the Holocaust museum and he left about halfway through. Here's my question. The way, I, I don't know him that well, but to me, he looks and speaks like a Farrakhan acolyte. The way I see it is the Holocaust museum has a place for people like him once they understand what their sins have been. But to just, from what I read was, the Jewish Federation wants to rehabilitate him. So they invited him for a Seder night and then had breakfast with bagels and lox and then took him to the museum. A guy like him is thinking, why do I want to see this museum when my people have suffered so much? So at what point in education does the Holocaust museum have a place and when is it too early?
Well, I think, you know, we don't want to get into the trap of, we already have the following reality in America. Every single year, FBI stats, the number one targets of race hate crimes in the US, blacks. The number one target of religious based hate hate crimes, Jews. So whether we like it or not, we're neck and neck at the top, even though we're only 2% of the population. Farrakhan and, and his ilk have been basically selling, marketing a very strong drug. It's called victimization. And it's, it's not so simple. We want people to learn about our terrible past on the one hand. And we don't want to be, we're not interested in being the 21st century's victims. So, but Farrakhan has sort of brought that and an embedded throughout the decades that, and that's why you say, well, you know, 6 million died, there's 50 million blacks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to respond to your question in the following way. We have a traveling exhibition called Courage to Remember on the Holocaust. Been in circulation since 1988, translated into many languages. We have it to, active in Japan, 3 million people have, have seen it. One of the most moving moments for me was when we opened the exhibition about 50 feet from the grave of Martin Luther King Jr. in Atlanta. And when we, we came to do the finishing touches before the formal program, a very dapper African American gentleman, middle aged, came up to me, it's about a half hour early. And he identified himself as a state representative, a lawyer. And he said, Rabbi, I want to tell you my personal story and then I think you'll understand why I came, came out tonight. Said, I was born in Harlem, I was the middle child of seven kids. Unfortunately, there was a different father for each of us. A horrific situation at home. He bootstrapped himself, he went to Columbia University, he got a law degree, he moved to Georgia. A huge, amazing success story, an American success story. She said, you know, Rabbi, let me, let me explain something to you. So I've spent decades now trying to find my roots. And I've been able to trace back my roots to a plantation in Virginia in 1857. And before that, nothing. So when I, I come and I, I know about the Holocaust and I, I just want you to understand something that for me, I will never know what my true roots are. I don't know where I actually came from. I don't know what my forefathers believed in. I'll never have that. My, my roots go back to, to a slave plantation in, in the 1850s. And he says, I look at the Jewish community and I marvel at the Jewish community. And here, I'll take over. We don't even understand how much we owe the Holocaust survivors. And we understand, the, one of the goals that Eichmann had, and I think that he stated when he thought he wasn't going to ever be captured, was that even though he didn't succeed in killing every single Jew, he believed that the Nazis succeeded with the final solution because so many of our teachers and communities and institutions were wiped off the face of the earth, that this was basically the end of Jewish history. What Eichmann and the others obviously couldn't account for is that three years after Auschwitz, you have the state of Israel. But that also, the survivors, instead of embracing terrorism, which they had every moral right to do so, the world didn't give a damn about them or their families. They embraced life. The people who were left, who had the knowledge, became our teachers. They created a bridge so that we can still point our kids all the way back to Moses. But when we look at the lens of where we're at and we look at our African American neighbors and others, you know, we have to dig a little bit deeper and not play it by the narrative or rules of the Farrakhans or the Electronica guy. That's exactly what they want. I'm, you know, originally born and bred in Brooklyn. I hate playing the narrative by the rules and the rules of the game by our enemies. We don't have to do that if we're smart enough. And I've traveled the world, all over the world. There are people of goodwill and faith in every single culture. You know, we have to figure out who they are, find them. And then, and in the social media dominated world, it's not that difficult anymore. And make common cause with them. Part of that is to really understand, as the education I got that evening in Atlanta, to understand what it is that Farrakhan understands about the black experience and how he minds it for his own reasons and his own goals. So instead of staying focused on the Farrakhan, we should stay focused on creating relationships, meaningful ones, with, with our African Americans and Latino and all the other neighbors. And the way to do that, by the way, we don't call it interfaith, the Wiesenthal Center, we call it multi-faith. You know, I, it's not, I'm an Orthodox Rabbi, I was ordained at Yeshiva University. You know, I, it's not, I'm an Orthodox Rabbi, I was ordained at Yeshiva University. It's not for me to say how people should reach out to God if they're not Jews. If you're a decent human being, if you care for others, you believe in God, my monitress already says, you're going to heaven. Don't worry, whatever, whatever, uh, faith you are. But we do have an obligation to stand up for ourselves. And I was the Jewish spokesman at Durban 20 years ago in South Africa, which was the worst, uh, hate fest against the Jewish people and everything we're talking about apartheid, uh, you know, the, the, uh, delegitimizing Israel doubles, that's where it was birthed. It was birthed within the context of the people who tell us they're in charge of building a civil society. So it's all hands on deck. We have multiple tasks. And I think the most important statement I'd like to make to listeners is you don't need permission from any Jewish organization to do your share. You have the right and by all means of saying to any Jewish organization, your own temple or synagogue, your, your lodge, you know, your, your hillo, your chabad, hey, we have a problem here. Uh, we need to fix it. We need to, you know, figure out a way how to deal with it and not sit back and say, oh yeah, those other guys are going to take care of it. That, that, that world's gone.
One last question, I know you have to leave. Um, Rabbi Cooper, speaking about roots, um, I'm very curious about something. My mother's family in Romania was deported to Transnistria. As a child of Holocaust survivors, I've been spending my life reading anything I can get my hands on because I grew up hearing about the atrocities. It was in my blood to learn as much as I could. And it used to bother me that not enough is publicized about Transnistria. And it was almost like a silent history. However, as of late, there was more being made of knowledge. So is the Simon Weizenthal Center involved in teaching about Transnistria at all?
In the context of the overall story, yes, but let me, let me put it this way. We're not primarily an academic institution. We're a teaching institution and I would say more for the masses. Uh, we opened the Museum of Tolerance 27 years ago. And I was involved, uh, much more back then in the hot debates, harsh debates internally. Uh, Martin, uh, Sir Martin Gilbert, the late great historian was, had helped us. And we had the following, uh, reality, which we still follow today. You, you have at most, and we actually keep building the museum for maybe two to three hours. Let's say the Holocaust presentation is about an hour and 15 minutes. So I know one thing, I've never met a Hungarian Jew who's happy at the end. And I've never met a Polish Jew. I remember one, my Henry Appel, my late great friend, he was two and a half years in Auschwitz. And he would say, the people from Hungary, what do they know about suffering? So, uh, I would say the following, uh, no, we don't have enough. We don't talk enough about what the Nazis were planning to do, you know, in, in Germany, uh, in, in, uh, in, in Morocco and, and to Jews in Arab countries, et cetera, et cetera. We're always learning more because of the Cold War. The, uh, amount of information of what happened behind the Iron Curtain is still only now emerging. It'll take another generation. That is primarily Yad Vashem's, uh, mandate. Uh, and there are many other important academic institutions. That's, that's not the path that we sought. But as someone who's a child of survivors, your Jewish instinct is kicking in and say, one second, I want to make sure people understand, you know, what happened to my family. Yeah, it's a, it's a, uh, an important road. It could be an interview you do with, with the survivor or did. It may be going back to the roots and doing a mini documentary. There are different ways to, to get attention. But the scope of what actually happened, the, i- is really almost beyond comprehension. And it's certainly beyond the scope of any museum. If, if they gave us 300,000 square feet or, or a, a square block, that's not, that's not, I think, the way I see it right now, talking, let's say educationally, let's, let's, uh, end on a positive note. Um, I don't know about you, but I, I think it happened to me. It's a beautiful Jewish tradition. Uh, as you know, Jewish parents, uh, want their kids to be educated. And so historically, when the toddler is sort of old enough to sit on his dad's lap and communicate and show curiosity. So they would take out the olive bet primer, right? That just tablet that had olive bet, A, B, C, D in Hebrew. And that, what they would do is the father would take the finger of this little boy and move it towards the tablet, towards the A. On the A, on the olive was honey. And then take the finger from the olive and put it into the child's mouth. The goal, to make the first educational experience a sweet one. Let's just understand that in the 21st century, all of this technology, all of it is only the honey on the olive. It's not the gold, it's the, but having said that, that means that you have available now in 2021, the potential to educate a lot of people of what happened, uh, what your roots are and, and the, the amazing, uh, power of having the connectiveness to your roots that Hitler wanted to utterly uproot and totally destroy. Okay, and, and failed. So your instinct is correct and you can act on that. And, uh, you know, the idea of, yeah, probably the only place that that part Romania would be listed in our museum is in the presentation on the Vancay Conference. January 20th, 2022 will be 80 years to a time where in Lake Vancay, 14 ministers of state of Nazi Germany, eight of them with PhDs, sat down to vote on creating what's called the Final Solution. Every one of those academics, one of whom was, was, uh, educated in a major university in the United States, they all voted with Heidrick and Eichmann. This wasn't just a matter of hublums from, uh, from the street. So it's the 80th anniversary. We're going to be doing some important things to remind the world, uh, about the lessons that need to be taken. But here's one, never confuse, uh, education and degrees with ethics.
Rabbi Cooper, educational knowledge about the truth is the key against antisemitism. Holocaust education must go on through the generations till the end of time because never again, never again. Rabbi Cooper, thank you for joining us today on the definitive rap to educate us. And thank you to venues.com for hosting our show. And thank you to our audience for tuning in.
Thanks for listening to The Definitive Rap with your hosts, Bela Sebrow and Alan Skorsky. Be sure to tell your family and friends they also can listen to The Definitive Rap on Apple Music, Spotify, Google Play and your favorite streaming service. See you next time on The Definitive Rap.